All the meeting to order, regular Lama State Council meeting for Tuesday, June the 20th. Two items on this are the approval of the minutes for the council meeting from June 6th, and the minutes from the council work session at the same like June 6th.
One correction. On the approval of the change of the regulations for power and light, I will ignore that. Noted.
Senator, I have a motion to approve with correction.
Move approval as amended.
Second. It's been moved in second and all those were favored?
Aye.
Alright, passes. And at this point, we come to the mayor's report, I don't have anything to report, it's been kind of quiet a couple of weeks, so we'll get to the reports from the council representatives. Counselor Silverman.
Arts and Culture Commission met on June 12th, and spent quite a bit of time talking about July 4th festivities, we have, as of this evening I hear, we have now 23 vendors it looks like lined up, so that's good, things seem to be coming together. Things you'll see again, similar to some other prior years, you'll see things like community art show, bounce houses, Tycoe, Drubbers, Children's Arts and Crafts, Zumba in the Park, we've got several different bands, so you know, full lineup basically, so I think we're in good shape there, coming together nicely. Also then on the Arts and Cultural Commission, they purchased a piece of artwork that's being framed now from the WU Student Art Show, so that'll, we'll see that at some point, and they actually issued their first three arts and cultural grants for this coming year, we have one last year and there's three this year, so that's kind of the highlights.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor, can I ask a question, and you may not know this, and I haven't had a chance to check, but is the 4th of July celebration and all that goes with that, is that on the Travel Salem website?
Don't know yet.
For the Polk County, you know, travel tourism?
I don't know the answer either. Scott or Phyllis?
I don't know, that would be a Mark question.
Good idea though.
Yeah, it would be worth, you know, you might get to see more as a result.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselors, thank you.
I was not able to attend the library board meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I'll start off with the historic preservation, we had a pretty good turnout for the 1st of May on our breakfast with the senior citizens on historic day for the city of Monmouth and Saturday, so what we're gonna try to do is continue that, so we have kind of a group to pull from, plus we're using the local, you know, senior citizens deal downtown, and that's where we want the people is downtown, so they can see where our historic really is, you know, instead of out in the outside areas, so it really became, we had a lot of photo search and between the Polk County Museum and Western, Western has really kicked in a lot of, a lot of photos from us, they're going through in digital now, so when they dig up ones with the railroad or the early history of Monmouth, they're calling this up, and we're getting copies of that, and so one of these days, from what I understand, won't be after Mark leaves, but we'll hope that it'll be on the TV and the, there at the counter, and a couple of other places, so we're trying to get more history of Monmouth, and working on all that, and the Historic Railroad Display, that was really good at the library, and that came down, and other than that, we're through till September, we have an historic. On the Planning Commission, it was a, basically it was a work session, we were really discussing recreation vehicles and a residential use in a manufactured home park, well we found out that the new law, I think a year ago, changed all that, and you can have RVs in a manufactured home because they are a living quarter with electricity, with heat, with sewer, so we have, gonna have to rewrite our laws a little bit influencing with that. The other thing was, actually there was two tours of the Ash Creek Restoration Projects, the first one was by the Planning Commission, and the second one was, you know, the city was invited, anybody in the area, so they have gone, and basically we're just working on updates for the, for our codes and everything in the city and resolutions, so that's what the Planning Commission.
Alright, thanks. Counselor Shinklin.
The Parks and Recreation Board met jointly with the Tree Advisory Board, so if Counselor Sharma has anything to add, feel free to chime in. It was for a get-together, a potluck we had, and pretty well attended, the, not a whole lot of business happened, we briefly went through some items on the agenda, Eclipse Time Capsule, the Main Street Park Playground, yard tree planting sites, possibility of some tree planting projects, and spoke briefly about the Madrona Park Walking Trail and Arboretum. No decisions were made, it was very brief. Would you agree at all?
Well, Diane Ostrom of the Parks and Rec Board and I got together during that meeting and decided that the Tree Board and Parks and Rec would have a float in the parade, so we will have a little girl dressed up as a tree, and we'll have someone ready to plant her on the float, so I hope you'll all be there at the parade to give us a cheer as we go by.
And then like, like some of the other committees, that was our last meeting until September.
Thanks. Are there any community announcements, any upcoming activities, other than the 4th of July, where there's gonna be fun and merry in it throughout Monmouth and Independence? And with that, we'll go to the City Manager's Report.
Yes, a couple items, Finance Director recruitment is going very well, got extremely good applications, we got those cut down to eight, we're gonna be invited to phone interviews next week, and we'll move along, and I'm real confident with the process where it stands right now. Then the, a couple things, Electric Department on Highway 99, they're getting some sequencing things, still direction from ODOT on how and when to do things, it's much more complicated when you're working with somebody else in their systems, a lot of the issues are how much do we tear up and patch back when they're gonna come back and dig them up, you know, right after us, things like that, but we're getting direction there. We did have about a one-hour outage yesterday in the northwest section of town, had some equipment fail, just got old and went out, it took more time to diagnose than fix, and once they figured it out, then it was fixed very quickly, so I think it's pretty enviable though to have something come on that fast, you know, when there is an issue, so. And then, last one, library related, they actually have a new program they're doing called Bedtime Math, and actually the person who participates gets an email, and then before they go to bed, they do a little math problem with their, with their child, and they go through it, and Chris, the library director, was saying one of the little kids was so confused that the library would talk to her after hours, it didn't make any sense because no one's at the library, so they worked it out.
That's it?
Scott, relative to the equipment failure and the power outage, I, and again I'm just asking this because I don't know, but I got a couple of things, what was the communication to the community, anticipated duration, or any sort of info, other than the power is coming back on, are you aware?
Yeah, basically when it occurred, we got it on Facebook, and so a lot of people picked it up, picked it up there, this one was so fast that by the time we figured out what was going on, everything was back on. I think in other situations, we actually debriefed a little bit today, so if something looks a little bit more long-term, then we'll use our various platforms, including our Nixle system, we could actually turn that on, either segregate that. One thing we dealt with, which is interesting, the police have talked a lot of times at their own call, and everybody wants immediate information, but the police are trying to do their police jobs, lead it up with a person glued to a phone, so then how do you quit answering the phone so you can type things into the notification system, so we get a little choke point there when you don't have that many people to take care of, spikes in activity essentially. But, we do have the backup with Phyllis running our system, so if it, I think in the future, if we had something where we know, ooh, it's gonna be out for a while, then we can get that word out.
And do we have any, and I hadn't really thought about this, I haven't thought it all the way through, but just simply asking, you know, there may be some customers that are more susceptible to the outage than others, like me, I just had to reset my clocks, somebody that's got a, you know, like a major chiller running, I know the university was sort of scrambling a little bit, is there sort of a hot list to call over? I don't think so.
Yeah.
I don't think we even know who that'd be.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, this time we're at Citizen Comments, this is a time reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda, the maximum is three minutes per item, and tonight we have a couple of public hearings that are specifically looking for comment on those items, so if you're here for one of those public hearings, if you could just wait until we get that public hearing, it would be great. So at this time, is there anyone who'd like to make comments during Citizen Comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our business agenda, and this is a public hearing, for sale of property located at 152 Warren Street North.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, so this agenda deals with the 152 Warren Street, south, actually, I should be north, maybe just south, oh well, it's actually north, but this is the old fire station property, so as you remember, we did a bid process on that, we got one, one who came back, their bid was 222,400, definitely a qualified bid, as it goes forward, one of the procedures is what we're doing here, you actually have to have a public hearing, declare the property surplus, and authorize the sale, I think that's just to make sure that we're disposing properly, you know, anything that we're getting rid of at that point. So we actually had a notice of sale prior to this, so it's been duly noticed, here's where our public hearing is, and then you can take action. Now, an adjustment on this one, you have a different resolution in front of you, the proposers came in, once they actually really got all their estimates, they were a little bit shocked by some of the cost, the roof was in worse shape than they expected, and they were like, we're not too sure we can actually make this work at that price, so what they're proposing at this point is to respect the minimum bid on it, and actually do 200,000, and so if we were able to make an adjustment here, it would actually be a $200,000 sale, and then we would adjust your resolution accordingly, and accept at that point, hold the public hearing, I would recommend doing so, our other, we only had one other bid, it was only at $150,000, so it wasn't even responsive, I don't think there's that many people out there, you know, interested in the building, so I would be very happy getting 200 for the building. Any questions?
I've had a number of people ask me what this property is worth, is there appraisal available?
None appraisal, we never did one, we purchased it for 205,000, way back in 2007.
So you don't know how much the property's worth?
No.
Do the buyers wanna know how much it's worth?
No.
Hmm, okay, seems kind of strange to me.
Not necessarily, you're in a process, and if you did something you think is reasonable, then you go with that.
Alright. I just, I would like to point out though, that I really appreciate you working to keep us in the black here, and finding ways to sell this property to help us pay our bills, but we need to have some vision here too, and I know there were at least two other people, other parties, interested in buying this, one person had cash in hand and wanted to open an antiques mall and an art studio, and the other was a young couple that wanted to open a restaurant with a fire station, and it seems to me that if we're putting in an exercise facility there, and the vision for Monmouth might be to bring people in from out of town, who, people who wanna stay and shop and get something to eat, that we should have the kind of vision to understand that they're not gonna come here for an exercise facility, they might come for a firehouse themed restaurant, or to go see an art gallery, take an art class, so I have to say I'm a little disappointed that we didn't pursue those two leads that I told you about.
Yeah, I talked to one person, I don't know who the second one is even referenced.
Okay, so, but I did tell you that somebody was interested in opening a restaurant, they're buying a restaurant.
I had no contact information from anybody, I don't know, and I think to back up, the council said take price, this is strictly price, not qualitative, not something that we want in there, just if somebody gives us the amount of money we'd like, then you're okay with that.
So are there any other questions or staff, but this time I'd like to open the public. I'd like to open the public hearing for anyone who'd like to make a comment about this property.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Hudson, I live in Edwards Edition, I don't know a whole lot about this, but I do know that one woman in our community was the person who offered to put in the antiques mall, and I think she had $200,000 cash in hand, and now you're offering this property to the original interested party for $200,000, and so I think to Counselor Sharma's point, what is our vision for this downtown property? Is it a CrossFit training facility that's offered in communities across the Willamette Valley, or is it something that could be more in line with our Monmouth engaged plan to have restaurants and to just make downtown a little more livable? So I just put that out there for the council to think about, maybe it's an issue of opening it up to more parties again, and not just going back to this original party, and saying, sure, we'll drop the price to 200,000, so it's just my thought.
Do you know if they did a bid? If I can clarify that, the one party did not put in a bid, and I actually talked to them, and they said that it would take too much renovation to make it work, so they chose not to proceed.
But that, was that the antique mall?
Yeah, yeah, they said that this would work in there.
I think, I don't know if we wanna consider opening it up again, maybe she's changed her mind too, or maybe there are other people who have learned about this subsequently and have ideas, but just a thought for the council to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, thank you for having me up today, my name's Chris Lopez, and I'm new to the community, and I just find it a little bit odd that we're selling without an appraisal, as someone who just purchased a home, and I understand that real estate is complicated and nuanced, and the different sectors of real estate are such, but I find it odd that we're proceeding without having any frame of reference for what the property is worth. Does anybody else find it odd, I guess, I'm sorry, my apologies that I'm new to these types of proceedings, but...
This is not a, I don't wanna put this, this isn't a discussion time, this is, we're taking your input.
And that's, that is my thought then, it's, I'd love to see, as a local resident and voter, love to see an appraisal and some type of scope of what the property's worth before we start talking about price and thinking about, you know, who to sell it to and why.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So is there anyone else who wanted to speak on this property? Seeing none, closed hearing, and at this point, we have a resolution in front of us, resolution will be 1837, this is, this will be the resolution for the reduced price to 200,000. So, do I have a motion before we go into discussion?
I move that we reject the offer of 200,000 dollars.
Can you repeat that again?
I move that we reject the reduced offer of 200,000 dollars.
I second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to...
Not adopt the resolution.
Not adopt the resolution. And any discussion?
Yeah, I'm very troubled by the timing, it seems to me that we had a bidder come in at 224, it was known that our minimum was 200,000 dollars, when there was no other qualified bidder, the bidder who bid 224,000 suddenly found 24,000 dollars worth of repairs that they didn't see before they bid 224,000. This, the property's obviously worth 224,000 at least, we got an offer for that much, and, you know, allowing them to drop it down to the minimum simply because there was no other bidder, it defeats the purpose of opening things for bids. We had talked about if this process didn't work, we would look at using a Realtor, and I think a Realtor's first step is gonna be to help us figure out what the value of this property really is, we know it's worth 224, somebody offered it, and so it may be worth more, and I just, I do not like the attempt to drop their price simply because there was no other bid, and so I'm not going to be voting to authorize the sale of 200,000, and I would prefer that we, if we only got, you know, one bid that met the threshold, and then one that was substantially lower, I think we need to advertise better, we need to turn it over to a Realtor, I realize I think first fees, but those fees would be less than 24,000 dollars.
I have something, Scott, maybe can you describe the process to us again, just to revisit it just a little bit, so I can understand it again, I think I know what it is.
Yeah, so it's at the basic level, we put out a bid, without anybody walking the building if they wanted, and so they, we had folks come through, including the ones that did actually bid on it, but then we specifically put in the process in the building a due diligence period, and this is no different than you would do on a house, I myself put down a bid on a house, found out what the repairs are gonna be, and then backed out of the contract, that's a normal prostitute business, this case here, I don't see anything nefarious going on, these people are legitimate folks, trying to work really hard to make this work, I think the biggest one, they got them, they were really surprised by the roof, they didn't think that was gonna be an immediate need, when they got somebody up on the roof to look at it, they said, you got a problem here, they've got intrusions in the building in different parts that you really couldn't see if you just did a visual, so this is just a due diligence period, I'm very confident there is no game playing here, they really found things that were gonna be higher, that was gonna make it probably not feasible for them to open, and I would come back to my original point I made earlier, I don't think you're gonna get better than 200,000, we can pay a Realtor, we can, an appraisal wouldn't get you too far, just on that note, it's a vacant fire station, there's no comparables anywhere, you're not gonna get too far there, but I don't think, we haven't had a lot of interest in the property for years, this is a legit business, anything would bring people to downtown, for the prospectus, it's very popular, I think they would be buying things at other places in town too, so I think it's a good legitimate use, and the key thing is that we did have a process, we had somebody submit, at this point with somebody who at least is willing to meet the minimum to then just close your process, you know, it sounds like you go through the process, you say that you qualify, and then we just say, no, we changed our mind.
And, sorry, I was gonna say, the advertising period was for how long, and where did we advertise?
It was like a month.
A month, so plenty long.
Yeah, locally, and I think we hit the itemizer, I can't remember if it was the state's.
Craigslist.
Yeah Craigslist, so definitely.
Website?
Yeah, the website, yeah.
Okay. What date did the new offer, the 200,000 dollar offer come in?
Yesterday. And we're talking to a person that if you say yes, I can probably call them on Wednesday and have a check in hand.
And we talked about bringing people into Monmouth, I know that it's a concern on a lot of the businesses here, that we find a way to bring people in to shop and eat. There's a CrossFit facility in Independence, there's another one right down the highway on Highway 99, there's another one in McMinnville, how is this CrossFit facility gonna bring people in from out of town?
I don't have a clear answer, I guess you could argue a lot of businesses, you know, are duplications, but the key thing is our process was price based, that's how you decided to sell the building.
I think we remember the vision here.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I looked at the assessor's report on this property, and it's not appraisal, but of course the assessor is charged by statute to maintain the real market value of properties in the county, the real market value of the property on the assessor's tax roll is 154,110, that's real market.
Wayne, does that give any indication when that number was determined, or do you know how often they revise those?
You know, I think it's every five to six years that they, they do note, they have on here the record of the deed by which the county, the city purchased the property for 205,000 on here, but no, this doesn't tell me when it was last appraised, I'll see...
They don't spend a whole lot of time on non-taxable property.
That's true too.
Yeah, I, one thing is, so you're new in the council, you didn't, we had the police station appraised, we brought the people down from Port, because this was a big deal, this was a year and a half ago, we never even got even close to the appraisal price, never even got close to it, and we paid for them to come down and appraise it, this property's been sitting over here since the city bought it, we've done nothing with that property whatsoever, but put some Parks and Recreation stuff in there and a float, and I've been on it for two years to at least get something back in use, and it is a very old building, if you've been in it, it's old, I mean, it's gonna take work to even make it a CrossFit, I don't care, whatever that is, the bathrooms have to be fixed and everything else, it's really, it's only a half a lot really when you look at it, it isn't that wide, it isn't like a full fledged, the big deal was that they were trying to hold it up for a development with the College of a hotel there, but that didn't fly, and then the person that owns the market wanted to buy it, but he wanted to have us set on it again for another five years till he could get enough money to buy it, that to, I've been the lawn champion to get this stuff for sale because we get no money on it, we have to pay maintenance on it to repair stuff, same as the police station, we've had, how much, we had to pay 30,000 I think, or 25,000 last year or something, on the maintenance of the old police station. We're not in a real estate business, I think we went fair enough about it to go out and advertise it, I mean, I've had probably half a dozen people ask me about it, I've even seen some plans that they drew up on it, that was pretty nice, but if they weren't interested in it, I guess they weren't interested, but I just don't see where we set on something, and we just can't make it go, and I know that we set 200,000, and we were hoping for 200,000, they came in at 224, they, you know, just like anybody else, you can change your mind and buy anything, and we'll put it back in. My point is, we've set on this thing forever and done nothing with it, at least we get somebody in there that might fix it up outside a little bit, it is a business, back on the tax roll, they'll be paying taxes, we can go out and get an appraisal, but we paid good money for that one, the police station, anyway, no place, and we didn't get anything even close to it, so my point is, I understand about the vision and everything, I don't know why they didn't put the money down, not in the office, I have no idea why they didn't put an earnest money, and do all that, you know, to really go in and put the money down, I'm just saying, we're probably right at what we thought we were gonna get, we get something in there, it doesn't mean if it doesn't make it in two years, and something else goes in there, I mean, you know, it's just like any other business, I've seen more turnaround in this town you can shake stick at, downtown businesses, it has parking, which that's what we wanted, how much they're gonna utilize, I don't know, but they gotta utilize some of it, don't we Scott?
Not with parking, so it just doesn't have to work.
So that's my point of looking at it, okay?
Can I get?
I have a question, Scott, when we spoke last, there was discussion of some improvements to be made regarding a walkway or something to that effect, if we accept this bid at 200,000, does that, does any obligation on our part to participate in that go away?
Oh, actually, there's really no cost, all we're doing is just moving the driveway as part of the bigger project, so it was just a matter of telling them to move it here.
Okay. And I think, you know, just a statement, I agree with Royal, I think the comps are gonna be tough on this because it's a, it's a dilapidated billing on a property, it's gonna, any business to open there, it's gonna be a very narrow, very narrow use as is, so you know, let's say you appraise it, it comes in, it's a miracle, it comes in over 200,000 dollars, you know, they're gonna want money back for improvement. You know, they're gonna want money back for improvements to make there as well. This, in my view, is a burden to hand, and so I think, uh, I think we take it.
So Tom, did you want?
Yeah, just a clarification from Royal. By the way, I don't, once again, Royal speaks wisely when he says, "Don't count on this money till we got it in hand."
Right.
And I'm learning to, learning to listen to you. The, uh, do you know what the appraisal was on the police station?
Yes, 265,000 dollars was the appraisal on, on the police station.
Yeah, it ended up kinda near you at 250. And on that one, jumping ahead a little bit on the agenda, but this first price, we actually got a 200,000 dollar bid, only bid. And then immediately they started looking at the costs and they figured out that they couldn't make it work. So we were looking at the city mechanisms to subsidize the project, help get it down, or just taking a lower price. So, uh, that one theoretically probably could've got down to like 150 by the time the developer is working it through. So you've been offering your appraisal of like 100,000 dollars.
Okay. Any more comments?
You know, just, I, I guess one of the things that I would ask is, and this perhaps is, is a question for you Lane, is this, if we got a, if we got a bid on a, you know, on a piece of property like this and it's been out and, uh, and they got a bid and now, you know, it comes to this point and then all of a sudden they back down on it, are we in jeopardy from someone else saying, "Hey, wait a minute." You know, if I, if I really would've thought I could've got it for 200,000, I'd have been all in. I mean, do we have any jeopardy in that?
No, I don't think so, especially if 200,000 was the minimum bid. I mean, somebody could've bid 200,000 for it if they wanted to. So no, I, I don't think so. If you were going down below the minimum bid, I think it'd be an issue. But if you were staying at or above the minimum bid, then you're not undercutting anybody who might've bid at, you know, because they could've bid within that range and they've not.
Sure. You know, and then, and, and to the point of, uh, that Counselor Shrum made, and it's a good one, and I think Tom and, and others, you know, regarding how this could fit into the sort of overall vision of what downtown Monmouth might look like. I think we've gotta proceed with caution in terms of being too prescriptive in the types of developments that we sort of allow in and, and don't allow in. We've sort of went through that with the marijuana deal. You know, we, we might like, uh, you know, different business perhaps, I, I, I don't know, I, this is fine with me. But, but I think we gotta exercise some care that we don't begin to become a bit too prescriptive on this, this sort of thing. You know, and as far as the appraisal goes, that, you know, it, it's worth what people pay for it, right? And, and, and while I appreciate, you know, your comment, and, and mine should've been something that we would've initiated in the beginning, there is an expense to that. But on the other hand, um, you know, there's plenty of evidence that, that appraised value is not what it actually sells for and vice versa. Good counsel, good advice, and, uh, and I think, uh, Wendy made the same comment. But the bottom line is, is it's worth what people pay for. And, and it sounded like 200,000.
And you do have a regular value of 154,110, is that your dollars?
And John, I'd just like to say it's not being prescriptive when, um, when I tell the city manager I have a buyer with cash in hand, 200,000 dollars. Here's her name, she'll be calling you tomorrow morning and if her call is not returned.
Uh, that's not correct Counselor Shrummer, I met with her on site.
You met with her, yes, but the next morning after I told you that she was gonna be calling you, she didn't get.
I contacted her, she said she was not going to submit a bid.
Tom, did you have any comment?
Yes, well, I have a question. Was there, was there a cutoff date for submitting bids?
Yes.
And what was that?
I am not sure I kept the notice in here. I'm trying to cut down, I haven't waited for everyone.
It was, I mean, I assume it was before yesterday?
I believe it was May 19th. Cause we, we published it April, April 14th.
Yeah, yeah.
Why is this not a late bid, this 200,000?
No, no, their bid came in.
Their, their 224,000 dollar bid came in.
Correct, yeah.
Now they're submitting a 200,000 dollar bid after the deadline for submitting.
Yeah, and in, in lane talk process, I think at this point we're working with a qualified person and you do have the flexibility, if you choose, to, to take an alternate price at this point, or, or not.
No more, I don't worry beginning 2.4. If I buy a house, I put it on the line, or I sell a house, just as soon as we're selling this business and I put out there for 300,000 dollars and I get somebody to come in and says 300, I get another person that said, "I wanna be second in line for 280, another one for 200", the, the Realtors will take that in line. So if the first one says they can't make it, drop out, second one. If, I'm just saying, and I don't know the lady, and I'm being honest, I can be the next one. I mean, why didn't she just go right up there and said, "I'll sign an agreement for 200,000 dollars" if the first purchaser doesn't take it? Then it's an open, I mean, it's open, that's what I'm saying. If you both end up with the same bid, then you have to reopen the bid, that's kind of the way it goes. I'm just looking at it from the real estate end of it and what we tried to do and what we didn't do. And I realize they dropped the price, but if the other person would've said, "I will put a bid in for 200,000", second bid or whatever, and the other person dropped, we'd have had a tie. You see what I'm saying? Then you have to open the bid back up.
I don't, I don't think once we accepted the first bid.
No, once you come back, if you, if you had two to gather, you could ask.
Royal. I see. I didn't interrupt you, and I'd appreciate the same respect. Once we accepted, once we chose the bidder, we have every right to negotiate with that person until the sale is made or not made. We're still in that process. So this doesn't have anything to do with who else bid on it. We're working with the person who was the highest bidder and we're negotiating to see if the sale happens. That's what this is about. So, are you guys ready to vote?
Can you remind us again what the motion is?
Motion is to not approve a resolution declaring real property located at 152 Warren Street, Oregon, not needed for public use and authorizing the sale thereof. That's Resolution 1837. So, a vote in the affirm, in the affirmative is to not approve it, a vote in the negative is to approve.
Well, I think you would still need another motion to approve.
Yeah, this is just, this is, this is just this one to.
Yep, it's just the vote to, to reject.
So, with that, can you do a roll call, Phelps?
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Stanky?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
No.
Counselor Schenkel?
No.
Counselor Carey?
No.
Counselor Shrummer?
I think it's yes, we have no bananas.
So that motion fails? So do I have?
I move to accept Resolution, or 1837, a resolution declaring real property located at 152 Warren Street, Monmouth, Polk County, Oregon, not needed for public use and authorizing the sale thereof.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Clarify, that was the 200,000 dollars.
That is 200,000 dollars, correct.
And, um, so for that roll call please, Phelps.
Counselor Shrummer?
No.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Stanky?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And that motion passes four to two. And we move on to the next item of business, which is the old fire station building surplus.
I'd like to.
Sale authorization.
Do you need to get us out of the previous hearing?
No, you closed it, you're heading.
I'll close it, yeah.
I, I like a clarification from the term on one thing that we just voted on. Yeah. Now, if, if two people submitted a bid, one for 200,000, one for, say 250, and all, I'm just saying, this is on the deal. We, we accepted the 250. They come down to 200,000, then we have actually two people with the same bid. If rego, wouldn't that then have to open it up?
That would be a mess.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, let me clarify from what I said. This is, um, on the old police station building surplus and sale authorization, Scott?
Yeah, so this one is actually, yes, it's at 238 Jackson Street East, the old police station. Uh, way back when, public library, police department, was in there for a number of years. And they just moved out, so same thing, we went through this basically same process, did notice, took proposals. In this case, we only had a one bidder, and that was actually a New Life Ministries. They have the same thing, they would bid 200,000, they bid 212,385. Same process, need to declare the building surplus, and then accept the contract for that. Uh, we did the notice on this also, so this one's ready to go if you are ready.
And we did have an appraisal on this one from what, about a year ago?
Yeah.
Two years, two years.
Yeah, and it was, it came in at 250.
It was in that range so.
Yeah, it was an interesting one there, you had a little bit better, but the same thing comps are really hard. Um, how many buildings like that are there in Monmouth? They had to fish into Dallas and Independence and Salem and try to find, you know, different buildings. So, so once again, it's a lot easier when you have a, you know, 1,800 square foot, you know, single level house and you're doing comps.
So any questions of staff?
It says here that, um, the New Life Ministries provided a bid that met city standards. What are those standards?
Minimum price.
Minimum price, okay.
And cash.
And cash. And this is a church, so it'll be non-taxable property?
Correct.
Okay.
So this, I'm sorry.
So, all right.
Sorry.
Royal, and then?
Okay, do we have to do anything to make this sale go like a land use or a variance? Yes. Okay, do they pay for it, we pay for it?
Yeah, they pay for it. So in this case, it's actually a conditional use in this zone, so they'll have, they've already met with staff and we've got them going on their application paperwork. And also for that type of use, they don't, they don't meet the minimum parking requirement, so they're working on a couple options on that.
And those are both conditions of the sale.
Right, and so, so the idea was, is if Counsel approves this, it's ready to go. We, we put them into a due diligence period, kind of like the other building. And if for some reason they go through the processes and don't get the conditional use or don't get the parking variance, then they just step back from the sale.
However, the last time we discussed this, you know, issue with financing, that apparently has gone away.
Yeah, I, I communicated back to our position on that and haven't heard anything else.
Okay. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. This would be Resolution 1838. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 1838 declaring the building at 238 Jackson Street East as no longer needed for public use and authorizing the proposed sale.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Tom?
Is this in the urban renewal district?
No.
It is not in.
Monmouth is across the street, but not this one?
Yeah, that's right.
This is a high density.
Presidential, right.
Yeah.
So just for the record, it's appraised at what?
Uh, we had a, we had appraisal at 250,000.
And we're selling it for 212, okay.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was waiting to turn.
Okay.
Okay, so how long do we have on the, for the condition use and the parking? So if it doesn't get done in 90 days, this reverses it for like one year, is it 100?
Oh, no, 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 we actually had it announced to, uh, just August.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking.
And that was probably aggressive, we'll probably.
Cause the last buyers, they went forever.
Yeah, well, and just, well, it's, it's our process is actually.
That's okay.
Public notice, can you say it in here?
Right, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? Roll call please, Phelps.
Counselor Stanky?
Yes.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Shrummer?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
And that motion passes five to one. And we're moving on to the next item of business, which is our, um, boards and commission reappointments. And in that, uh, there's also gonna be, um, approval of a new appointment to the tree advisory board and to Monmouth engaged Carol McHale. McHale. Is this yours, Willis?
Yes. Mayor and Council, this is the list of people who are requesting reappointment to the boards and commissions this year. We have four people, I believe, that did not want to be reappointed for various reasons. And Carol McHale, is that how you pronounce it? Does ask to be appointed to the tree advisory board and the bike pit committee to Monmouth engaged.
Should we have a motion?
I move to reappoint the listed applicants to their respective boards and commissions and the appointment of Carol McHale to the tree advisory board and the Monmouth engaged bike pit committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to vote? And all those people are reappointed. Thank you. Our next item of business is the, um, public hearing for the 2017, 2018 budget.
Yeah, so this is a annual practice, the, the budget committee event actually more extensive than, than this year than normal. We actually have four meetings and they relate their own job, get into a product. Uh, part of the budget process is to hold a hearing. So the purpose of this item is strictly to hold the hearing. So you open up, you take comments, you close the hearing, and then that's actually it for this agenda item. Then a subsequent one would actually approve the budget and do all the appropriations.
Okay, so I'd like to, uh, open the public hearing. And with that, I have one person who'd like to speak on that, I believe Nan Willis?
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Nan Willis, I live at 631 Morton Way South in Monmouth. I am an educator, so I've got handouts. I also will probably give you some rhetorical questions. And last but not least, I'm gonna follow my notes so that we're efficient with our time. First, I really wanna thank you and any paid employees of our city. It's a wonderful city to live in, I don't take it lightly, the hours that are put in. I also thank the service and commitment of those folks, um, police officers. Any of my comments tonight have no bearing on the people, this is a great place to live. I'm a caregiver, and as such, I'm unable to attend meetings. I'd love to have, you know, given hours, extra hours to the budget committee, uh, but it's very difficult to get out in the evenings because I must get respite. I would ask the council tonight not to approve the resolution for the 1718 budget based on three things. First, uh, in terms of the staff report and the use of the consumer price index, the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, and we do use the Portland index, and in reviewing it, it is clearly related to urban workers. Specifically, on page two, CPI for urban wage earners and clerical workers, and that's your CPIW. In a quick aside at the end, it lumps Polk County into these statistics. I would question them inasmuch as, I'm not willing to pay a house price or an apartment price in Portland compared to Monmouth. I'm not willing to pay the gas prices in Portland compared to Monmouth, nor the food. They are different, and one has but to go into a store, drive into a station. I also would suggest that we know the reputation of PERS and how much they're draining us. Well, even the PERS COLA was 2%. And if you retired after 2013, it was 1.25%. I do believe that a 2.20% COLA increase is excessive. I also found in looking at the figures, and I'm using the staff report dated May 25 that you have, all of these numbers come from this. And in looking at contingency funds, having run budgets myself, I have a handout. So I took each fund separately, I take the total fund, and I look at the contingency fund, and that's the left column. And of course you do simple math to figure out what percentage of your total fund is contingency. You know what contingency is used for, yes? Unexpected, emergency, unforeseen, these range anywhere from less than 1% up to 85%. Wow, 85% of a total fund that's unforeseen, well, that kinda begs the question around government transparency, really, you don't know the cost of what is expected? Does it follow best practice for municipalities? I know when I was crunching budgets, we had a range for contingency fund, 85% was not that. The third reason I believe that the budget needs to be reviewed, and all rhetoric aside, I know we hear about PERS and who raised the, all that money, we've gotta service the PERS debt, but, in looking at the budget, it's really not clear to me that anything substantive has been cut, feels like so much business as usual, and as a taxpayer, and I won't go into the fact that not all citizens are taxpayers in terms of property ownership, let's just say we are, I think, if you look at the numbers in a way that I've sorted them, you get a sense of what the real priorities are, because I don't know about you, I, I look at the staff report, and I see millions of 900,000, I'm buying a cup of coffee before a meeting, right, buck fifty, they don't translate to me, so, the first thing I did was simple math again, and on this, I figured, well, I don't know, the last census, I drive into town, our population is just under 10,000, but, I don't like math, so I rounded it up to 10,000 to do these figures, so I took each fund, line by line, this matches your handout, and I just divided by 10,000, I thought, well, how much are we really paying per capita for these services? If we figure we have 10,000 citizens, each citizen is putting in so much towards this service, so you get a nice laundry list here, and this is what I use subsequently to really get a sense of what the priority order is for this budget. I just nominate, I don't know, I think we're neighbors, but I just nominated them tonight. In this next one, we get closer to seeing where the money's really going, per capita, per citizen, and I, I'm guessing, you know, the purpose of government money is to provide citizen services, I get that, it's a good thing, it's why I live in the city, I don't wanna live out in the muck, I like city services, but, and I've kept it again, pretty much in alignment, the only thing I did differently on this one is this, there are a number of monies, in fact, it was almost a half a million in unappropriated funds, you know what those are? Maybe? I feel like my, my daughter's, yes, no, maybe so, okay, moving on, unappropriated funds, money could carry over your budget till you adopt a new one, but the fact is, they're still categorized, so I added those, and it repositions the priorities, again, I'm separating general fund from all the other funds, but in a nutshell, certain things begin to pop up, one, the MyNet fund, that's a chunk of change, two, not sure what transportation system development is, don't have buses, hoping it has something to do with the highway improvement, special assessments? Hmm, not so sure, that's transparent to me, what that is, but, we can move on, there's your, your PERS debt service fund, really doesn't compare well when you look at it compared to the police department or MyNet. Last but not least, and this is where I like to synthesize information, because the budget document, and I, I've run million dollar budgets, they're, they're terrible, I hate budgeting, probably why I avoided the community, but this last one, I lump, again, I'm using the same items, but I'm putting them by category, so I think it begins well, I think our city is paying for power, waste out, water in, and that's good, we like that. We drop down though, and now a priority is clearly the police department, and I've seen the report around crime, I'm not sure we're a city of criminals, we, we're pretty in, in good stead there, I'm not sure I want more money on that right now, MyNet, oh, whoa, I don't even get that service, that's a market choice, why are we supporting a market choice? Hmm, rhetorical question, management and finance, street fund, I get those, they make a lot of sense, there's that transportation system development again. So, you really see priorities on your first page, this is where your money is, and if you make cuts, this is where the money is. Your second page, notice how we dropped down from 120, almost in half, to your library, our library at $66 per capita, there's the special assessment fund, Parks and Rec, 38, Senior Center, 11, there you have it. So if you crunch the numbers this way, for me, it created some meaning about where is, where is the money going? So, in summary, I will give you my notes, and the summary at the bottom. I believe that water, power, sewer are necessary services, can't argue that, I do believe that the high police funding, if it continues, is not warranted at this time, I also believe that continued support of MyNet does not serve all citizens, it is a market choice, why are public monies supporting this? And, there's no mention in MyNet's last mission statement about even, even trying to pay back the debt, my bank and my mortgage company won't let me do that, it's simply, for me, an issue of not cool, the transportation system development fund or the special assessment fund seem to be out of proportion, I couldn't know more about them, but look, your bottom totem pole there is your library, Parks and Rec, and Senior Center, and you can't deny that if you look at the numbers in these priorities, it's not just a number, it's the way that you put them forward and balance your budget. I thank you for your time tonight, and I don't envy your decision making, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the work, for your earlier offer.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak to the budget?
I have a citizen comment.
Okay.
You can speak from there, you don't need to do that.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Alright, even though I'm up here in the dais, I'm speaking as a citizen, and this is, this is from Judith Maul, who lives on Gwynne Street in Monmouth. This statement reiterates my previous oral public comment, asking that the budget for the Monmouth Senior Center not be reduced in 2017-18, it is imperative that the director's position continue to be funded at the current FTE of .75, and that the person in this position receive benefits. Since Director Sutiel will be retiring before the end of this calendar year, I strongly believe that it would be difficult to recruit and retain a well-qualified replacement for the position if the FTE is reduced from .75 to .625, and the benefits package is eliminated. A new director will need adequate time to learn the job and to continue to maintain the high level of programming that Director Teal has established, the city needs to recruit the best qualified candidates possible. The center certainly makes good use of very competent volunteers, but the director is ultimately responsible for training and supervising these volunteers, and for overseeing the center's programs. I'm quite sure that Director Teal has worked more than .75 FTE in order to accomplish these tasks, and we owe her sincere thanks for her many years of service to the Monmouth community. The Senior Center provides a safe and friendly environment for people of all ages, but particularly for seniors, the meals, classes, games, and social connections made at the center help to keep our center, senior citizens mentally and physically healthy. The city of Monmouth has just invested in, in addition to the facility, and it would be short sighted indeed to reduce the hours for the center director, at the same time that the center has to increase in size to better serve those who use the Senior Center. The center also has an outstanding working relationship with Western Oregon University, and offers opportunities for students to gain experience working with seniors, this relationship with students is also stimulating for our senior population, of course, the center director is instrumental in helping to foster this relationship. A strong Senior Center adds to the desirability of living in and visiting Monmouth, and therefore serves as an incentive for people of all ages to invest in property and support other businesses in our community. As you know, people come from nearby communities, including Independence and Dallas, to participate in Monmouth Senior Center's activities. I sincerely thank you for considering my request to fund the director of the Senior Center at a minimum of .75 FTE, and continue the existing benefits package for a new director. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other poll comments? Hearing none, I'll close the hearing, and we'll move on to the next item, which is to adopt a resolution, adopting the 2017-18 budget and making appropriations.
Budget transfers.
Budget, I'm sorry.
Yep, you have to go backward in time.
Yeah.
So this one is dealing with 2016-17 budget resolution transfers, the basic on this is if you go over a dollar in a category, you get a budget law violation, and we have to make sure that we get that right, another complexity we have is, things that are in the budget, the auditors actually reclassify, so even though we've actually got it set up okay, we have to track it, there, you know, reclassify suspending, so you have to make sure you're positioned okay to get those covered, so with that, if we go through the details in the general fund, a couple specific items, we, we've actually had some more attorney's costs with, we had a higher level of marijuana DUIs, and so we just had some extra cost processing.
And that'd be court appointed defense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there, and then the Senior Center, we had some extra IT services after the building was completed, the next block, the sewer, water, electric, and building, those are all just defensive, those are all just to make sure, we don't know if anything's gonna happen, but like I said, you can't go over by a box, so you just, you just make sure that happens. WIMPAC had a couple adjustments, they were actually low on personnel this year, but then we also, they went to sign up for the maintenance contract and had to do a multi-year, so it was a higher expense, now obviously it's better in the future, but it was a little bit there, so we had to make a couple adjustments in that fund, and then tourism, it is just interacting between the different funds, we've had a variety of tourism grants, the rural tourism studio, the rare student, and we just needed to make an adjustment for how those were passing through the grant fund and the tourism fund, so if we approved this, that would, I think, get us in good shape, nothing guaranteed, but, I think we'd be covered for the shit.
And this is Resolution 1839?
I propose, make the motion, I move the adoption of Resolution 1839, a resolution approving the appropriation transfers for FY, for the 1617, and directing the finance director to make the appropriate entries to record the appropriations transfers in the FY, which is the 1617 city budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any questions?
I have a question, we are transferring some money here to account for additional costs related to marijuana driving under the influence of intoxicants.
Court appointed attorney.
Court appointed attorneys.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion of the fact that people won't be arrested for possessing marijuana?
The activity level's still very high, I think one of the hopes when we legalize is that cases would go down, so far, across the state, that hasn't happened.
And these are driving offenses, these aren't possession offenses, these are traffic crimes.
Okay, so this is traffic court, it says municipal?
Well, municipal court handles traffic crimes, DUI is a, is a class A misdemeanor, a person charged with DUI, it's like alcohol, alcohol is legal to buy, but you can't drive while you're under the influence of alcohol, marijuana is the same thing, it's legal to buy, but if you're under the influence, you're still liable to be charged with DUI, it's a class A misdemeanor, and so that implicates the right to a court appointed defense attorney.
Okay, so, in the past, when marijuana was not legal to use recreationally, and someone was arrested for possessing it, what happened to them, did they come to the municipal court?
For the most part, those were violations, those have been violations for a long time, felony cases would have gone to circuit court, we wouldn't have prosecuted those, and violations wouldn't have implicated court appointed defense.
Okay, so, and then I have another question here, under the water fund, I think this means a precautionary adjustment to increase the franchise fee in lieu of taxes, and then what's this WTRPKDON?
Water park donation.
Water park donations?
Yeah, so we actually, the water fund covers the park usage for their water.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Fellas, roll call please.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Shinko?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
And that motion passes again, we'll see, and we're on to the next resolution, adopting the fiscal year 1718 budget and making appropriations, Scott?
Yep, okay, so similar, so this is the 2718, 2017-18 budget, and so the budget committee went through their process, as mentioned, four different meetings, at the end, we ended up with a budget that was $35,605,752, everything in the budget does conform with state budget law, and what you do at this point is you pass appropriations, and if you go back to the resolution itself, a little bit of how we do it, in the general fund, we actually appropriate by, by department or program, so as you go through, in that case, you've got, you know, management, finance, police, on through, you've got, and transfers contingencies, in the other funds, most of the other funds, where you've got the different moving parts, like if you take the sanitary sewer fund, they actually go by personnel services, material, capital, debt, and operating, those are similar for places with staff, as you go down, if you get a department like the grants fund that doesn't have that, they would just have materials and operating contingencies, so, in this case, just for perspective, management, finance, as long as their total at the end of the year didn't go over the 1.266, it'd be okay, you're in the sanitary sewer fund, if their materials and services went over by a dollar, and they had a million dollars that they didn't spend, it would still be a violation, cause they went over in that category, so we used to have a different way, we do treat the general fund different than some of the other funds. So then what happens is, those are the appropriations, and then more key, you know, the budget document has all the details, all the line items that back that up.
So one item I'd like you to cover, since there was a letter about it, was the Senior Center Director benefits, and they had indicated that they were afraid that those would go away.
Yeah, that, that isn't correct, the position right now is actually .87, it would go to .75, which is 30 hours a week, which is benefit eligible, and that's programmed in the budget.
And they would receive full benefits for recording?
Yeah.
Right, okay, just wanna make sure we clarify that, so.
Yeah, that was in the budget all the way through.
So this would be Resolution 1840?
Mr. Mayor, if I could hop out, you have several questions.
Well, just a, on what you just raised, the reduction to .625 was at one time on the table at the budget committee, but we.
During the last meeting.
We out of hand.
During your last meeting, that was a possibility.
We're not, we're not going down there.
That was rejected at the last meeting.
So it's still at .75.
Royal?
Yeah, I, I can get back to, I guess, on the other page, I just circled, was the MyNet fund, $1,059,000, is that kind of a, do we use that, or we have to put that out there to cover?
We won't use that, that's just, that's just there, just in case.
You mean, it's like this year, we, $300,000 or $400,000, what was the total this year?
Oh, I think the whole year's gonna end up, I think it's, the total was about a million, our share would be?
600.
600.
Yeah.
And, it should be, as we said, should be better next year, aside from having to change out all of our court technology.
Right, but that.
It's unhappy?
It is not.
That's like a contingency for the MyNet if they couldn't make it.
Yeah, and we park extra money, and we've actually got money in there, just, just to make sure we've got a buffer in there, and actually, we've got a buffer built in the electric fund here.
Those are sharp, what do you got?
Yes, in the sanitary sewer fund, there are, it is $512,518 for personnel services, how many employees is that?
Oh.
And same with the water fund? And same with the water fund?
Let me look. Makes it more challenging when your budget was printed.
Yes.
So let's play that. Bear with me. So, make sure we're out here. So sanitary sewer fund, let's total it up here.
4.67.
4.67.
That's FTE, yes.
And, let's flip my budget over.
Could be pretty close.
Yep, they're 4.65.
4.65, are these, is there any crossover in employees?
Oh, absolutely.
What?
Yeah, we have different employees, what we do is we actually allocate them. Some stay housed, just in one section, most people will be working in different sections. And we bunch it accordingly, and then they do keep track of the round of students in your senior.
Okay. For this one, some library, there, we have a grant, or an investment account for them, that's limited to spending for fixtures and furniture, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, can, they always use it for improvements.
Okay, so there's, there's $30,000 there that we're gonna be using to buy furniture and fixtures for the library?
Not necessarily. That's actually.
Okay, that's both into the general fund?
No, 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 that stays there, the money only stays there, so.
At the library?
Yes, in that, in that fund specifically. So if they didn't spend anything, you would just have $30,000 to start next year. If they spent $10,000 off that, you'd have 20 going to the next year.
Okay, so can, is it possible to count the repairs for the air conditioning as fixtures?
We haven't done that, this has actually always been used for basically new things, something new and improved, and not just for routine maintenance.
Okay. Is there a contract for the tourism fund? The tourism fund, is there a contract, are we contracting with someone to do that work for us? It was 60,000 type thing, you know?
Not the fund itself, most things that come out of there, we did this year because we had the rare student, and another thing, we had a little bit of a pass-through, generally speaking, it's, it's the city's money, and then we, then we allocate it, we use it for music in the park, purchasing, advertising, whatever that may be. But we don't, typically, we have, Mark Fancy is our economic development, community development director now, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to rehash the course of the budget debate and everything, just particularly to all the incredible work that Professor Willis did. If you have any questions or comments before or after, please feel free to contact. If you're gonna be around till the end of the meeting, I can give you a card, I'm happy to talk to anybody about that. But it was a very, very long process, and to explain the conclusions we came to now would take the same time the four meetings took. But it, I really appreciate that, that was an amazing amount of work that you did.
And I would comment and echo that, and then thank you for your, your attention and your, your concerns. One of the things, though, that might be helpful, a number of the contingencies, and that's the sort of thing that you referenced and have high numbers, oftentimes, those are in system development charges, that there isn't enough money at the moment to spend them, to spend those dollars, and only after the accumulation of some of it's where the discussion that Tom's talking about might be helpful. So we sort of reserve that money until such time that we've got adequate amount to actually make something impactful on transportation, system development, that has to do with, and, and based on increased use and that sort of thing, based on development. And then relative to the police department, one of the things that the budget committee looked at pretty strongly was, is that other comparable cities, cities comparable to Monmouth, and the number of sworn officers that they had, and I know we don't want to necessarily pattern ourselves after everybody else, but there is a collective wisdom there that I think emerges when we have, you know, we look at Sweet Home, and we look at State, and we look at Silverton and Dallas and other places, Independence, for the number of sworn officers we have. So there was a method to the, what you might perceive as madness, but, and the budget committee, as Tom said, comprised of, I think it was 14 people, part counselors and part citizens, went through this pretty carefully, and so, assuming that it does pass, I'd just like to let you know that you've, we've heard what you've said and appreciate that. I'll have to say that I'm gonna rely on the collective wisdom of the budget committee on that, and I'd be glad to visit with you, but thank you.
I'm gonna comment.
Yes, I'd like to say that I think we're at a crossroads here. We have an opportunity to make Monmouth a jewel of a little city in the middle of the Willamette Valley, the kind of city where people from out of town want to come and visit, and shop, and dine, and maybe even live here. And I think if we want to make that city, we have to think about our budget, because what's in this budget here is not that city. What's in this budget is a fearful little town. We are, in that budget, we are spending more than twice for the police department, what we spend for community development, parks and recreation, the library, and the senior center combined. We're very top-heavy in administration and finance. We spend more in administration and finance for the 7.5 positions in that department than we do for those other four departments combined. So I would like to say that if we want Monmouth to be that little jewel of a city, it isn't gonna happen tonight, but it can start tomorrow. And I thank all of you who went over this budget line by line with a fine-tooth comb, who helped to educate us, those of you who ask questions, demand answers, those of you who went to the budget committee meeting, and even, even when you were told the public could never understand this budgeting process, you didn't pick up your things and leave and go home, you stayed. I think you stayed to let us know that you're holding all of us accountable for how we spend your money. And if this truly is, in this budget, how you want us to spend your money, so be it. But I think we should make Monmouth that little jewel of a city.
Well, Monmouth is a jewel of a city, so I'll disagree with Counselor Sharmer, wholeheartedly. Our budget committee comprised of 14 people, spent nearly 14 hours in four meetings to put this budget together. The staff started working on this last November to put it together, it worked diligently. I've, this is my 15th budget that I've worked on for the city of Monmouth, and it's as thorough and as effectively put together as we can put them together. And I'm not sure how this is a fearful budget, but I must say that it's a very thorough, well-thought-out, our priorities, while some may not feel that they match your particular priority, there will be opportunities in the future for membership on the budget committee, and if you feel so inclined, there will be positions on council. So with that, is everybody ready for a vote? Well?
What I want to say is, I've been on, this is my third year, I was on seven before that in the eighties. What I look at is, I don't like comparisons to other cities, and the main reason is, is that our tax base is not even in comparison to Independence, to State, to Dallas, to anything. So we have to make that extra critical check of what we're doing, we're spending our money. And I realize the police, we see that every time, that there's 17 here, there's 20 here, the same as the public works, there's 27 in Newport, we only have 13 or 14. It's, it's the difference of the type of taxing base that we have, that's totally different from all the other towns, other than probably Newburgh would be the closest one to us, you know, with all their college, and they're also, they have a own public works and power and life. So I really think that when we say, you know, that they have this many people in different towns, we really have to look at our own town and our own tax structure. And I think we worked hard to try to improve that this year with some of the changes we made in to bring some of those standards up. I still think that, I'm kind of for a little bit, that we've probably overdone some of the things, but I just say that you can't compare us with other towns, because we do not have the tax base. Absolutely, totally, we don't even compare with any other town. When you look at the college, nothing against college, I like the college, I think it's great, but if you went to the tax and you went over their deprecation, 51% of the valuation of our town is in that campus. They pay no taxes. So I'm, I'm just saying, there's a whole lot in this budget committee and everything else, and I think people that come here to ask, I'd love to see on a budget committee, I'd love to see, even to come to them, to try to, to try to see where the money comes from and how we try to appropriate it. And I really appreciate this breakdown, I've kind of done the same thing too, but I really appreciate this breakdown. Thank you very much.
One moment, um, this has been a very interesting half of the year, with very important topics that came up. And twice now, we've been accused of being fearful. And I'd rather that not be used a third time. I think it's an insult. And the first time I let it just go off my back like water off the duck, and I'd rather not have to do that anymore. There is no fear. I saw wisdom, I saw consideration, I saw reading the evidence, I saw listening to the witnesses, and I heard reasoned discussion, and we reached the conclusion. I didn't see a bit of fear.
I'm, just, just a little bit of a clarification here, I didn't mean to imply that we are fearful, I'm saying that when we spend more than twice for our police department than we do for all the other departments that make this a livable city, it says to me that maybe the people of Monmouth are afraid. I don't know what they're afraid of, that they need to spend so much money on the police, but it looks to me like they're afraid.
Okay, that, need to bring this back to order. So Phyllis' roll call, please.
I move approval of Resolution 1840, a resolution adopting the budget, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and adopting the capital improvements plans for the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 1840, Phyllis' roll call, please.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Stanky.
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to the next item, a business election to receive state revenues.
Yeah, this is an annual activity that's very enjoyable, because you're saying, yes, please, thank you, we'd like to run it down, but it's a state requirement, so to collect the various state shared revenues, we do actually have to say so. In this case, we've got $267,000 that comes into the general fund, and $575,000 goes into the street fund. And so if you pass that resolution, those dollars will come to us.
And that would be Resolution 1841.
I move adoption of Resolution 1841, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Stanky.
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel.
Yes.
Counselor Carey.
Yes.
Counselor Sharmer.
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the fiscal year 17-18, non-rep plan adjustment.
Yep, so this is the, this is for, the key thing there is non-rep, the unions are under union contracts, we do have an IBW contract that covers the electric workers and public works employees, and then there's a police association agreement that covers the police officers. This is only for the non-represented employees. And we, we did actually get to 2.2%. The key thing with using a benchmark is that you pick a benchmark and you stay with it, obviously, from the table, I've been using that one for a long time. The reason we use the Portland is there is no better benchmark, there is no such thing as a Polk County, or a Salem, or anything, so you just pick something and go with that. So in this case, our figure is 2.2, that's the dollar figure that was put into the budget, and so it's already been programmed, so we recommend approval of that cost of living for non-represented employees.
And that will be Resolution 1842.
Are you gonna?
They have a motion?
You want a discussion?
Yeah.
I move that we approve Resolution 1842, a resolution adopting an increase in the compensation levels for non-represented city employees in the amount of 2.2% over the compensation level for this, this same employee during the group year, financial year 2016-2017.
Should be 2017. Yeah, the resolution's for 2017-18, that should be.
It says right here, it's.
Yeah, it's wrong.
Okay.
The resolution is correct, yeah.
Okay, 17-18, excuse me, I'm reading directly off what you wrote in.
Second.
Unless you want to go backwards and apply 2.2.
No, that's right.
So it's been moved and seconded, and, Laurel, you wanted to make comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. The, the union employees got a 1.75% increase, this is asking for a 2.2.
Different, no, actually, the, the IBW, they had, they actually had a one employee at .75, one block, the public works guys were 1.75, and then the electric was 2.5.
Okay. This is a very regressive cost of living adjustment. It's regressive in the fact that the lowest paid employee in the city, which looks to me like maybe a library assistant too, would get an increase of $594 a year. The highest paid person in the city would get a wage increase of $3,146. It's, it's the, the way that the people who make the most get the most, people who make the least get the least. So what I'd like to propose, if not tonight, but in the future, that we take the lowest paid person in the city, give that person a 5% raise. If it is that library assistant, he or she makes about $27,000 a year, and a 5% increase would be $1,335 raise a year. And then take that amount, that dollar amount, and apply that to everybody. Everybody gets a $1,335 a year raise. That would be 5% for the lowest paid employee, and just under 1% for the highest paid employee. That's not regressive, that's, that's much more fair. And when, when you consider that the lowest paid people are the ones who are most likely to turn that money, that extra money they get, back into the city, they live here, they spend their money here, I think that might be a better way of allotting these cost of living adjustments.
Byron, you have some comments?
The question I had was, the one where I asked, how does this compare to the, to the CBA? And it seems to be a blended average.
Yeah, and actually, the interesting one, just historically, the non-reps have not fair to, well, the last five years. Typically, the non-reps have actually been getting lower raises than the unions.
And I was just at the Mid-Allan Valley Council of Governments, and this is the same CPI index, 2.2 for their, their employees, and they. And they checked around all the cities within the council of governments to see what their number was, and it's consistently that right now.
Yeah, I, I'm just speaking in favor of the two point two in recognition especially of the very low raise, and I think it was an unrealistically low raise last year of three tenths of one percent. There are major flaws in the calculations of CPI that, I mean, they're way, way beyond my pay grade, never fixing, but they exclude a lot of things that are essential to life and that are more volatile in, in increasing. So with that said, I, two point two seems very reasonable on the back of a point three percent raise.
I want to argue with you there, Tom. I'm on social security, I got nothing last year, and I got three tenths this year, and we're working on COLA, the same one as social, on social security. And so I realize we're not fair here, but I understand what Laurel's trying to do. I think we did this when we reevaluated the whole city on pay raising. But the one thing we have trouble with is when we deal with the union, they will not allow load a high. It's the same percentage, am I not right, for the lowest person to the highest.
I can't imagine there's any government anywhere that would not just apply it across the board.
See, that's the problem. But I'm just saying, that, you know, we, we argue about three tenths, last year I didn't get anything.
Well, you and I are in complete agreement. The, the COLA that they generate that comes up and ends up leaving social security recipients with less buying power every year, it, it, it's a fraud that government at the federal level uses to try to contain its costs. They pretend that prices aren't going up to justify not raising social security and other benefits. And yes, you, you're getting cheated more than the city workers work, but they're still, they were, when they got point three, they were getting cheated. Everyone knows that the cost of every item in the grocery store went up more than point three percent that year.
Any further comments? Been moved and seconded?
I would just like to say, I'd just like to remind all of us, we don't have to be like everybody else. We can set the standard here. And who knows, maybe everybody will follow us with a non-regressive cost of living adjustment.
Any further comments? Hearing none. Been moved and seconded. This is Resolution eighteen forty-two.
What's it?
This is Resolution eighteen forty-two. Roll call, Phil's, please.
Counselor Sharma?
No.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
And the motion passes fact one. And we'll move on to the next item of business, city investment policy.
Yes, it's actually a requirement to actually review the city's investment policy. We started out in two thousand, we did a readoption last time in twenty sixteen, and it has to be renewed annually. There are no proposed changes to the document. And as we've noted before, we stick with just the most conservative, easy investments that there are, just basically everybody's parked in the state pool, and we dig there. So with this, you just need to basically readopt our current policy.
And this would be Resolution eighteen forty-three. Any further motion?
I move we readopt the office city council resolution for the city of Monmouth investment policy.
Second. Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
We have a new finance director coming in. Who will be reviewing all of this. Okay, and, and if it's somebody who doesn't have a lot of experience in this, you're going to be holding your feet to the fire?
Yeah.
No credit default swaps, no derivatives. Okay. I want you to do that, Scott.
For mortgages?
Any stocks? Plastics.
So.
That's wherever you want to be unmanned, plastics.
So are there any other comments directly related to this resolution? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Just remembering that plan's been rolled back.
Counselor Sharma, can you?
Hold.
Let me run the meeting, please. Thank you.
You moved ahead so quickly, I didn't have a time to make a comment.
Well, I didn't ask for a comment.
Okay.
So this moves us to the workers' compensation insurance for volunteers.
Yeah, just another annual housekeeping item, we have our insurance through CAS, and you actually have to declare that all your volunteers are covered in the workers' compensation insurance. And if you go back on the categories, you get an idea that we've got the, the public safety volunteers, those are police reserves, anybody on a board or commission of the council. If an elected official does manual labor, I'm not too sure if that would really happen, but if you did, then you could be covered. You got that, and then, then all your other volunteers, like the library, senior center. We also cover events, we got community service workers, and sometimes we used to have volunteers interns, different things that would be covered by this. So if you declare the resolution, then all those folks would have workers' compensation coverage. And it's pretty normal.
And this would be Resolution eighteen forty-four.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, Scott, under financial implications here, it says the, the, the cost would be nominal. What is that cost?
It's not even really broken out. It's just blended into your overall exposures and coverage, so I couldn't even tell you.
Where's the, where's the insurance premium in the budget? Is it showing up in personnel or?
It depends.
Yeah, listed as?
Yeah, so you, so your, your property liability goes through all the different programs and accounts, then the workers' compensation would end up in your personnel category. So it just gets.
So it's included in personnel?
Yeah, that part is the workers' comp, your property liability would just be an insurance cost for the various programs.
Okay, it would be nice to know, we'd have to break it down in the future.
Yeah, no, Tom?
Yeah, I have some questions for Mr. Shutterly.
Yeah.
Now, workers' compensation is the exclusive remedy for employees who are injured in the line of their job. And under the workers' compensation laws, they cannot sue for the negligence of the employer. And I just wanted to know if by receiving or being covered by workers' compensation, are the volunteers likewise barred from suing the city for negligence?
Same thing, yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Scott, are they made aware, are volunteers, do they sign some sort of a waiver alerting them to that fact that that's their exclusive remedy?
Um, I'd say we do, we have, we have signup sheets, like when we do like tree plantings, those kind of activities. The rest of the employees, no, like, you know, library employees, volunteers, senior center, no, we've never done something like that.
At the end of the day, Lane, how, how enforceable would that be?
Oh, absolutely enforceable. We're providing coverage, then we come under the workers' compensation statutes, and that incorporates the prohibition on private action against the employer.
Whether, whether or not the volunteer knows that's what their remedies are or not.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of like, most employees aren't aware of that, of the exclusive remedy nature. They think their boss is negligent, they can sue them, and then they find out, whoops.
So do I hear a motion?
I move adoption of Resolution eighteen forty-four, a resolution extending the city of Monmouth workers' compensation coverage to volunteers in the city of Monmouth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call. Phil's.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously, which moves us on to the next item of business, which is the wastewater resolution, or the water rate resolution.
Yeah, so this is a, this is ideally for water fund, and we need to do a rate adjustment. Just a note, this is the only one we're doing this year, we're not doing one on electric or sanitary sewer. We did a nine percent last year. The water fund, we just went through the process with the budget. The, the basic story here is the fund can actually cover its operating expenses, and we're getting killed on capo costs. And it was a bunch of things that were unplanned for, we were not aware of it. Okay, I'll back that up a little bit, the alignment well field work was planned, we knew that was coming, but then we got a surprise on our filtration system with our main well, and then the tab is still being determined on Highway ninety-nine. What this, what this adjustment does at twelve percent is at least make some progress. It's not even close to what it would take to actually cover the, the expenses we have coming toward this one. If you wanted to really probably shoot one out of the gate to get us level here, you could probably toward a fifty percent rate increase to get us going. This just gets us in the ballpark, we're probably going to have to finance and then kind of integrate this into the budget later, but the twelve percent at least makes some progress, so we don't go backwards too much.
And this will be Resolution eighteen forty-five. Any more motion?
Well, let's discuss it. Well, I'll move approval of Resolution eighteen forty-five, establishing new rates for water service.
Been moved and seconded, are there any questions?
Yeah, well, last year we had a nine percent increase, we'll go back to that. That was a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year, is what that was supposed to bring in towards capital funds. But we hired another person for a hundred and twenty thousand a year, which was the benefits and everything else. So we only ended up with fifteen or sixteen thousand actually going into the fund. So I'm looking at this one here, is there any labor involved in this, or is this one hundred percent into the capital fund?
Close to a hundred percent. Just, just dollar wise, the, the personnel cost increase was eleven thousand dollars, that capital increase was four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So it's absolutely driven by capital.
I, I, yeah, I understand, and I understand that the, the construction costs, we probably have to bond that, go out and finance that and do it back. But I, I really have a tough time sometimes with these rate increases that we have, and I realize we have to pay for our water system, but I also, you know, we, our labor goes up very rapidly, and at Public Works, there has been the last couple of years, and I'm, I guess I'm not real happy. I thought ten last year, maybe nine this year would have been a good deal, because I asked about this. Wouldn't go ten last year, we went nine, and we didn't even gain anything, fifteen thousand dollars didn't even miss the front door. So the total of this amount, the twelve percent, is exactly how much?
Uh, out of all of them, I, I don't have that mapped down.
Like a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and sixty-five?
Okay, I'm, I'm not following your question.
Okay, what's, with the twelve percent increase, how much is that in more than the?
A hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah.
Here in the summary.
Yeah, okay.
So the, the easy way to do maybe one look at a take on math is we're generating a hundred and eighty thousand dollars when you just spent four hundred and forty-six thousand.
Right. And plus part of this money, then we'll come back to the general fund, and there are one percent more.
A little bit, yes.
Yeah. How much is that in the one percent increase in that? I mean, we have a lot of people concerned about the increase in the rate structure, so how much of that would the one percent?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Next meeting, maybe you could bring it, national.
One hundred and eighty thousand?
Well, no, no, the one percent of the total amount of money that we increased for a franchise fee on the total budget on the intake, how much of that is going to affect the rate of the twelve percent increase? I'm just trying to get back to the, the dollar here, to the dollar here, what we really get with the rate, which we didn't get much at all with the increase last year. This year here, I hope you know what I'm talking about.
Okay. I think last year, what you got is you got a properly staffed department, so we can actually get our jobs done.
Yeah.
And moving from dollars to amoebas, we have the Oregon Health Department breathing down our necks right now. June thirtieth was the deadline to get those filters in place. Are they there and filtering?
Actually, it's June thirtieth to get a plan approved.
Okay, how are we doing on that?
Actually, pretty well. Actually, running the test filters right now, things are going pretty well.
And what does the Oregon Department of Health think about that?
They're fine.
Okay. There are grants available through the state for water treatment facilities. Have we ever looked into any of those?
Not at this point.
It would be really nice if we had a water treatment facility where we could take the water that's going to be sent out into people's homes and treat it for cryptosporidium and the other types of deadly amoebas that can be in water. This would require having tanks of water sitting in a ten part per million gallons, or a ten, ten part per million solution of chlorine for six hours. And then we wouldn't have to have filters, but it would require a treatment facility. Has anybody ever thought of that? Has anybody ever done any, any research or talking to the people in Monmouth about whether or not they'd be willing to pay a fifty percent increase in their water rate? To have a state-of-the-art water treatment facility?
No.
Okay.
I think our assumption has been is people like to have, you know, water that meets standards and then at the lowest cost possible.
Okay, and, okay, all right. Maybe they need to know what the real hazard might be.
I guess interesting, so you're saying that the state health department standards are not adequate?
What I'm saying is that in about, I think it was about ten or fifteen years ago in Minneapolis, more than a hundred, or almost a hundred people died, and a hundred thousand people were sent to the hospital because cryptosporidium got into the water supply. That's a lot of people who died. We can, we can filter those little organisms out, but it's a constant kind of changing out of the filters. It would be nice if we had a, a state-of-the-art facility, is what I'm saying, and we don't have to worry about it anymore.
Any other questions? John?
So this, this is, when I read the staff report, my initial thought was this twelve percent increase was largely driven by what I thought was sort of a one-time expense in the Marion County well number one, and then this highway water line relocation. You're saying it's more than that?
No, no, I'm just saying if you really tried to generate the money, that's what it would take. And no, we, it is a one-time expense, so they're going to need to probably amortize that out and, and see how that goes. The wild card is, we don't know what Highway ninety-nine.
Yeah.
But that's actually got the possibility of bankrupting our fund.
Yeah. Well, I, I guess in either case, I, I, I think we ought to make certain that we have it noted that, that the reason for this rate increase is largely driven by, you know, the Highway ninety-nine project, and then the, the requirements that, that come from the Marion County well number one, and, and dealing with that problem. It's an anomaly, I guess. While maybe that isn't all of it, but that's the lion's share at this moment. And that just needs to be noted, it needs to be part of the, of the history of this particular rate increase in my mind.
Any other questions, comments? So it's been moved and seconded for Resolution eighteen forty-five. Roll call, Phil's, please.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Yes.
And that resolution passes unanimously, and now we're on to an ordinance adopting legislative amendment seventeen dash zero one.
Yeah, and this is a, this is a sign code, all the discussions, even how we see subdivision, just a lot of cleanup language, a big part was the sign code, you remember the fast food restaurants and the order boards, and so you had your first at the last meeting, and then this would actually be the second reading of the attached ordinance.
And so this is ordinance number thirteen seventy-four, an ordinance adopting legislative amendment seventeen dash zero one to the Monmouth City Code relating to signs, subdivisions, partitions, property line adjustments, and site plan review, and I declare it passed its second reading. So, have a motion on that?
What did you just do?
I just did the second reading and declared that I did the second reading. But I needed a motion.
Yeah, I move the second reading and adoption of, of the ordinance enacting legislative amendment seventeen dash zero one, amending the sign code, subdivision, and partition ordinance, and zoning ordinance portions of the Monmouth City Code.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded, any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Phil's.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?[1783.62]
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
Counselor Shinkle?
Aye.
Counselor Stanky?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. And like that?
I have a question. You know, we had the budget hearing, basically, we threw that off the side and started through each one of them all the way through. And missed something? This is the first one we handed out, and we said, actually, we had to start the next phase down, the next one down. When we started on this right here, reappointments, adopting a resolution approving the budget transfers, if, if before that it was a public hearing on the budget?
We had that.
I thought we didn't vote on that, I thought we put that last.
Oh, you don't vote on the hearing, you just?